Right.
Until last night, you didn't realize we weren't going.
Oh.
I guess you'd never like to do anything like that.
You're getting on a bus.
Yeah, right. Sorry. He was like, oh, I didn't realize you were there either. Maybe here, I think.
My mail's here.
So I do know. Maybe that's Jerry, I'm sorry.
I've actually got net. Or not what it is. I don't know, we have that for.
We have a corn. We good?
Dot net.
Good to go? All right, the time is now 6:00 PM and I'll call to order our work session on Tuesday, April 23rd. I'll now hand it over to Chair Hart to proceed with the meeting. Is he on Zoom?
And he's not there.
Might be having technical difficulties, so I'll call on Jeff Towery, City Manager, to introduce the topic, and Jennifer Coier, Finance Director, to present.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council, Members of the Budget Committee. We have been looking at the idea of the possibility of transitioning to a biennial budget process for a year or so now. We felt like last year was the wrong timing with the transition for the Fire District, but I wanted to bring the issue back to you in this forum to provide some more information for you about what a biennial budget process might look like, what are the pros and cons, and to seek some advice from you as we move forward. And at that, I will hopefully haven't stolen too much of your thunder, and I'll turn it over to Jennifer to lead the presentation.
Yeah, great. Thanks, everyone, for coming out for this extra Budget Committee meeting. The, as Jeff mentioned, we've, we've been thinking about moving to a biennial process for about a year. I mean, I think the fact that we needed to run two budgets last year was a particularly heavy lift, and it made us reflect on how much staff resources are going into what, it's a super important process, the budgeting and vetting how we're allocating our resources, making projections into the future, but so much of it is really compliance-driven, deadline-driven, having to hit some marks just which are part of state law and just making all of that go. It's, it's a lot of staff time, and one of the things that we're all struggling with and trying to find solutions for are ways to be able to stretch the people resources we've got on board to be able to do more things, more strategic things with their time. So that's kind of the context for this. So our, our objectives when we were considering this is to acknowledging what I just mentioned, the, the heavy compliance burden, that this is staff time, that kind of thing, and see if we can't come up with a solution that would allow us to provide at least equally as transparent information to the public with less investment of staff hours. We also think just having a longer budget horizon may help us in terms of some of these transitional issues, funding issues that we're working through. If, if we were making a financial plan, looking two years forward, that, it makes a lot of sense in our current situation as well, something we could really potentially leverage. And then the, the off-year, when you're not doing the whole statutorily required processes and that kind of thing, what are we able to do with that time? More, potentially more community engagement around financial or other issues, being able to free up public-facing staff to do the things that are, you know, what they were hired to do, the more meaningful things, and doing their work, so. So I, I did some projections, and this isn't included in your packet here, this information. I toted it up, all of the meetings we have, who are in which meetings, approximating how much time it takes to pull together numbers, to do the write-ups, that kind of thing. And the numbers are in a range of, we spend about 2,000, 2,700 hours a year on our annual budget process, and when you look at what are the hourly rates of the people doing this work, it's a pretty large number, it's approaching a quarter million dollars. And so moving to a biennial process, it wouldn't cut this in half because much of the work we do is part of the budget process, we would want to do the next year, how are we doing, you know, that kind of analysis, that wouldn't go away. But we do think that from an opportunity cost perspective, even though in the initial year, I think we, you can see the little graph, in the first year of a biennial kickoff, I think we'd spend more staff resources because we have to figure this puppy out, people need to get trained in ways that, you know, now they, folks know the processes that have been on board for a while. And then I think the year two of a biennial process, the first time round, it would also require more staff time because it's the first time we're doing the off-year to tweak how, you know, what do we want to do, what are the kinds of activities we'd want to do with this body, how would we want to engage with you in those off-years, that kind of thing. But then, once it got going, I roughly estimate that we would probably save, over that first three years, first three biennium, we'd be saving over 4,000 staff hours, that's kind of half a million dollars over that kind of a time period. So it's pretty significant dollars when you're talking from an opportunity cost perspective. And then just sort of when you're in a steady state kind of situation, after certainly one, possibly two, we'd be saving over a biennial period, probably approaching a quarter million dollars in staff time resources. So it's, it's, it's not small. So part of what we did when we started looking at this is kind of one of our normal go-tos, well, what do other people do? What are other communities doing? And so in the, in the communities that are closest to us, kind of the, the group that I will typically look at, the, the six communities with populations larger than ours, and the seven smaller than ours, so that we can capture Newburgh in it. So of, of that group, three are doing biennial budgets currently. And it's, we attended a, they had a session on biennial budgeting in the, in last March, so a month ago, in our Oregon General Finance, Governmental Finance Officers Association had a session, and it was very well-attended. And of all of the organizations that are currently doing biennial budgets, not a single one of them hesitated in, in answering the question, would you go back, and like, no. So folks, once they're in it, do seem to really embrace the, the process as a, as preferential over doing this annually. So, so in our external survey, we found, I think there were 15 organizations that do biennial budgets, local governments in Oregon, and so we asked them questions. And so in terms of level of effort, you can see from this graph, most of the respondents said that it was less time-consuming, they found it in the real world, to be less time-consuming than doing it annually. We also wanted to know.
Can I just add one thing? Also, important to note that this is, the biennial budgets is not sort of the purview of larger organizations, there are cities much smaller than McMinnville who are also on biennial budgeting, and they're also large organizations, I think, is Washington County one of the lists? There are a couple of large counties that are doing biennial budgets as well at some times.
Lane County.
Lane County is doing it now. So anyway, just want to let you know that it, it doesn't necessarily live in a particular population range or size of organization, folks as small as Central Point are doing biennial budgeting, and again, as large as Lane County.
Yeah, Florence, Gladstone, Rineville, and so it's, it's a real range. And just of, of our group, if, if you're curious, it's Lake Oswego, Oregon City, and West Lynn all do biennial budgets in that group. So we also, we are concerned about, you know, what is the kind of information and how, how do communities respond in terms of de-information being understandable, transparent, that kind of thing? And so nobody came back and said, we think biennial budgets are, are a better delivery device of financial information, but most said it's, it's equivalent in terms of transparency level, understandability, that kind of thing. So, so fortunately, that doesn't seem to be too much of a hurdle, which was one of my concerns about the prospect. Then just folks were really, as, as is the case, people in, people in local government are so generous with sharing their time and experience, so everyone gave us some write-ups about what, what worked and what different, didn't. So I just pulled a couple of those comments about, it allows them to undertake projects in the off-year, many efforts in the budget take more than 12 months to complete anyway, so that's an upside. And this next comment was something that hadn't occurred to me, but in one of the cities, they found that within departments, they are working more closely together and putting together a two-year as opposed to a one-year plan, so it actually improved their communications around financial issues at the department level. So that didn't occur to me as a potential consequence of making a longer-term financial plan. So drawbacks, people talked about the number of supplemental budgets, and honestly, that, we do a number of supplemental budgets, and we have done many, many this year, and I know of at least one more, if not two, that will be coming your way. It's just, to me, that isn't a troubling aspect of doing supplementals. And then there are, they highlighted technical concerns in terms of the implementation, making sure that your software works well in the new framework, and that, that is something that we are concerned about and want to take care, and if folks are interested in us pursuing this, we would take great care in, in that process, evaluating that part of it. Then another thing that had come up in our internal discussions, that also was echoed from one of the folks who, who replied, is that there can be a break in terms of engagement with the Budget Committee because you're only, the formal meetings are just happening every year. But it, it may be that, at least here, we have come to lean on the Budget Committee for so many kinds of discussions around financial issues, so I'm less concerned about that because I think we, certainly at Jeff's expectation, and I think generally across the, the executive team and staff, we want to be maintaining those relationships with our various volunteer committees and that kind of thing, because you, you add a richness and perspectives that when we're head-down, we just, we won't get if we're not talking with you. So, so I think you wouldn't get a year off, is kind of what I think I'm saying here, but we, we have yet to, you know, program out what that would look like, so. Then in terms of tips, they're like, you know, think about the cultural shifts that this may mean, and also just, there were several comments about the importance of having a good relationship and I, our information technology staff to have the time to be able to be a part of this activity. So one of the, it's not only finance, but IS also has a pretty heavy technical burden each year as a part of the budget process. So we're hopeful that with the investment in a, in a new system of, you know, once we figure out how to do it right, that it would alleviate a, a lot of those annual reporting, I mean, it's, you'd be surprised how much handwork is required to put some of this stuff together that we might be able to eliminate some of those issues that we have now. So just quickly, we also did an internal survey of staffers here about their engagement with the budget process, and we asked them how they access budget information, so they are, people are using that budget document, so that was important to hear. Then we asked them, what are, what are your pain points, what do you find frustrating? And so we've already made some changes based on this feedback in this last cycle. And then if they had any suggestions for improving, and there were a couple of people who mentioned biennium, it wasn't the biggest thing, but depending on what our proposal is, if you all are interested in moving forward, is to explore some web-based technologies that are purpose-built for municipal local government budgeting. There are a number of potential applications out there doing this kind of thing, and so that may actually also alleviate or address some of these other things that people might like to have in terms of improved processes and that kind of thing. So here's the basic proposal, is that we move to a biennial budget process for the next fiscal year, or this would be, if we did it next year, it would put us on cycle for the Oregon biennium, and there's some upsides to doing that in terms of your, your PERS rates are going to be across the same period, and that's a pretty big cost factor, so I don't think it's not doable to be on an off-year, but most do align, not every local government, but most do align with the state. Then we would go into evaluating potential budget applications to ensure the transparency, to help us deal with some of the technical issues, and to make sure that, we also take a step back and look at our just general processes, and there may be other opportunities to kind of do things a little differently that might improve communications and, you know, lower handwork that's involved in some of these processes. And we've got, with the, with the ARPA project, not having the grant manager anymore, there's still a decent amount of balance left there, so if we repurpose that money, we could probably afford to have a new solution paid for for the next three years approximately, and we've got general information on price points, but that would be part of our research going forward, if, if folks are interested in moving forward. So here are the proposed next steps. After the discussion, we would just move straight into a, a request for quotes kind of process, evaluating systems, making some choices, and there's a, there are a couple of places where in our code, annual budget is in the code, where we would want to do code amendments, working with David to just, you know, fix that language so that we're not doing anything askance from that perspective. And then implement for the, obviously not the upcoming year, we'll be seeing you guys next month on that, but the year after. So I just want to open up, how much time have I taken? So 20 minutes, we've got 40 minutes for any question, clarifying questions, or that kind of thing, discussion, and certainly if folks have any suggestions, I turn it over to the group.
Budget Chair Hart, can you see everybody in the, around the?
Sort of.
Table dials, or do you want me to call on people?
Adam, why don't you go ahead? It's kind of, I, I really see people very well.
Okay. So with that, Kelly, questions?
When I first saw this, I was very skeptical, but as I went through the discussion and everything, I would, I could really see some advantages to it. One of the things that continues to come up for me is I'd like for everybody on the Council and the Budget Committee to receive better financial information, and after the first year, which is probably going to be tough, but after the first year, I can see that there could be some really helpful times that you could get as much better information, and hopefully at a much lower cost. So I'm kind of excited about this, I'm curious to see what kind of web-based, or what products and stuff that you are looking at, and I think it's an opportunity also to educate the Audit Committee and, and the Budget Committee for that matter, and the Council on some finance stuff, kind of bringing back, and this is where we're at at this point, this is, you know, this is why we're looking at these two, and this is why we think, well, this one's superior, and stuff like that.
Okay.
I think there's, it's a good opportunity for education to, if it's not too much trouble.
Thank you, Kelly. Mr. Watney?
Jennifer, a couple of quick questions for you. In the budgetary process, if you threw a dart at the wall, how much of the lines are boilerplate, meaning office supplies, things of that nature, which really don't take a lot of time of analysis, but just takes time to put the numbers in and do the calculations and everything of that nature? Salaries, many of your salaries are labor-based, so are those boilerplate for you in the budgetary process?
The, the financial system that we're on has a module that we own and use for budgeting called Position Budgeting, and so it is, it does these, the calculations across the workforce based on segments. It is, though, remarkably labor-intensive, I, I must say, even though it is automated, so that, I guess, the trade-off is you've got a high confidence level in terms of accuracy, and you're not missing something somehow in a formula, but, but it is pretty labor-intensive.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty standard across the board when it comes to budgetary situations, your formulas are always going to drive you nuts.
Right.
One of my fortes was budgetary and, and forecasting, and I am very much in support of a biennial type of budgetary process. We, we attempted it in a couple of different hotels I worked at, but ownership decided they wanted annuals. I see a lot of positives coming out of biennials, and look forward to working with the city if you so desire. I'm so lucky enough to have finally retired and have a few extra minutes that my wife wants me out of the house. So as you go forward on this, because of my background in, in budgetary and forecasting, I would be more than welcome, or more than happy to support the city in analysis and review as a Budget Committee volunteer.
Yes, Committee Member Debbie Harmon-Fair?
I, I understand the pluses, and I'm not opposed to the idea at all, I'm, I have some questions about the timing, and I think that's only because, last time I recall being here, we were sort of wrestling with the $1.50 of unassessed value taxes, and we, we authorized you to make a budget, including 50 cents of that, but it didn't feel long-term settled to me, I guess, and so I wonder, can we make that commitment to a two-year budget without really understanding yet what's going to happen to all of those funds and how much that brings in?
Well, I, I guess for, for me, that would, that would become a combination of a process and a potentially a technical question. So if, if we were on a two-year footing, then I think we'd want to talk about, what do you guys think about two years forward as opposed to a single year? And then if, if there's, if there's not consensus on a year or two, then we can budget for one level, and then what I'm hopeful for is that some of these purpose-built budgetary systems, they have much more sophisticated workflows in terms of ad packages, that kind of thing. So I think you could have already kind of structured what it would costs and what it would take to fund it if we wanted to move new things in. So I think there would be ways that you would, we could handle it, but, but that's a, that's an important observation.
Thank you. Counselor Chinway?
Yeah, thank you for your work, I have a couple of questions. First question I have is, in reading through the packet, there's the discussion regarding the potential conflict in the city charter, and I would like some clarity, because the, the wording in there leaves it rather vague as to whether or not there's going to be a problem with what our city charter says, and a potential implementation of such a process. So can I, is there a way to get more clarity at this time, other than what it says now, which is more research is needed?
There's not a lot of research that can be done into what the things our charter says, how those, those ambiguities play out. There's, there's no way to research that. When, upon my reading of the charter, I think there is space for this. In the future, if we consider charter cleanups, we may want to make that clear. You point out that there is some vagueness there, I think that vagueness is a space in which we can work, that was my initial assessment when this was brought to me a little ways back. So I would like to look a little closer as we go forward, but I recall seeing that there was enough ambiguity that I think we could move forward.
My second question is, you're talking, as I read through this proposal, I see two predominant things being proposed. First is going to a two-year budget cycle, and the other is going to a web-based software product. So I guess my question would be, can we do one without the other? In other words, could we make the decision, we'd like to go to a web-based product, but that we don't want to go to a two-year budget cycle?
Certainly, we could do it that way, I think. I'm, I'm curious to see how well these platforms can deliver on a biennial budgeting product, so that's, that's one of the things that we'll be digging into, but yes, certainly, this, this kind of solution is available to us if we were to stay in, in the lane of doing it annually, and I think we, I think we likely would see staff time savings coming out of that kind of a move as well. I think it would be less impactful, my impression was that off-year concept really allows people to do those projects that they just can't get to, so, but certainly that could be an angle if folks preferred that.
And I assume at the end of this, you're going to kind of do the round-robin thing like we normally do to give our, our thoughts, or are you wanting that now?
No, we can go. No, we can go. Yeah, we got time. We'll be able to go round robin. Any other questions or technical insight any committee members are looking for? Counselor Payne?
I have a long list. So my first, I guess my initial concern, while I appreciate that there is some potential savings in time and therefore increases in opportunity, I am concerned about how it would change the fiscal oversight, especially when the council is looking for, hopefully, well, I'm looking for more, especially the profit and loss statements. I am, and it's, these are more just thoughts that maybe you could address, Jennifer or Jeff, or. I'm, I'm concerned about the potential for lower priority programs or services kind of taking a hit toward that longer-term planning. You know, like if we're having to compensate or shift for two years of planning, then, and we're making this adjustment, you know, at 18 months, how is that going to impact kind of lower priority programs or services or priorities for that matter, even goals?
I'm not sure I quite track what the concern, do you?
Counselor Payne, let me ask maybe a clarifying question. Are you, are you concerned that the, that smaller departments won't get due consideration during the budget process? Or I'm having a tough time tracking too.
So if we're going at the, like, let's, for example's sake, say you hit 18 months, and then there has to be significant adjustments to make everything reconcile. I worry about those lower priority programs and services kind of taking the hit for maybe overfunding or overspending the previous 18 months, you know, because you're having, you're having to play catch-up with those last, well, I mean, you're, you'd be looking at probably eight months out, so maybe you're at 16 months when you're doing that level of planning. But I'm still concerned about where those adjustments come in. So at this point, we, we pivot and make changes, you know, every four to six months, it seems, on the dais, we get approached with revisions, which is another thing. I worry about an increase in, in revisions going to biannual. But, and, and then that sort of negates the staff time. I mean, now we're not saving anything. I'm curious about the impact or potential impact to the urban renewal budget.
So a couple of partial responses then, just in terms of the general oversight. I actually think we will be able to exercise more oversight because we'll have the time and space to provide those regular financial updates to the council and budget committee or the course of the biennial budget. We're still obligated to do an audit on an annual basis, so we'll be doing that work every year, even in a biennial process. And, and we still have the ability to make course corrections because of changes in priority, changes of conditions. And typically, we do that through supplemental budgets, which we still have the ability to do even in a biennial process. So hopefully that addresses some of your initial questions. It sounds like you may have more. And this is also really useful for us to take into account as we bring forward any further conversation, if the consensus of the group to move forward. We can, we can try to address some of these reporting and oversight issues in the, in the larger, in the larger framework as well.
I appreciate the response, Jeff. I think you kind of hit it a little bit is, you know, whatever, wherever there needs to be adjustment, there can be room for a supplemental budget, but then sort of the appeal of the biennium is diminished because now that staff time is being filled in with something else. And I don't, I don't want to take a bunch of time. I just, these are all thoughts that were sort of swirling around. I do, I'm concerned about the cost investment to make to transition to a biennium, especially when we have our municipal court asking for $90-some-odd thousand to upgrade their system to increase their efficiencies. So if there is additional funding available, I'm not sure switching an entire process is the, in the best interest of taxpayer dollars. I hate to bring up COVID, but if we're on a biennium and, you know, we have another COVID or another, you know, kind of catastrophic event, pivoting in a biennium is essentially significantly more challenging versus maintaining the annual. And then I guess I want to add to that, that we have, you know, there's negotiation, like the, you know, the police union. So I think about kind of that and that planning because you don't know what those negotiations are going to look like as far as the, I mean, is, are the unions going to start meeting every, you know, two years in advance so that we're ready for biennial planning?
On that, on the contracts issue, that one, we typically here do three-year contracts and sometimes we don't. Sometimes we're not ready with the new contract ahead of the next fiscal year, so we, we, we have to make some, some assumptions. And so, you know, we, we budget and then make, if we're significantly off and can't absorb the, the differential within just the appropriated, then we would make a, we'd make a budget. But I think that, that kind of occurrence, I think, is likely to happen in, in either, either budgets process, whenever that kind of three-year rolling time, at some years it would, we'd know the two years and some we'd have to make an assumption for the year two and, yeah.
Thank you. Do you happen to know if there, if there's an impact to urban renewal, if they could also go to biannual?
I think we'd want to do both biennially, biennially, yes.
Good to move to Counselor Gary. Counselor Gary?
Thank you. This question is for staff and potentially Counselor Peralta, but in his role as school board budget committee member. My understanding is the school board's on a biennial budget. Is that correct? Okay. This one's really about, how do you, how does revenue forecasting work and how do you correct any revenue deficiencies in the forecasting? And maybe that's more from, from differently calculated in a school district setting, but I just, how do you, how do you manage revenue forecasting two years out?
Well, in, in school districts, because they are so tied to the, the state budget anyways, a lot of, a lot of that revenue, it makes sense for school districts to be together with, with the state and those projections. But I think it's, the, the same way that we would attack that in a single-year budget is how we would be doing it biennially, is as the, the annual figures are, are coming in, you can see whether, whether you need course corrections and then you, you move forward on them. I-
So a normal procedure of amendments and, and adjustments could work on a biennial budget in terms of revenue forecasting all the same, whether you're creating it year over year or creating a two-year plan and catching from number forecasting from assessor's office.
Yeah.
And I'll just add that, I mean, we, we already forecast more than one year out as we're doing our work. And so we would essentially be codifying that second-year forecast into the second year of a biennial budget. I would think we would probably, to, to want to deal with the possible fluctuations of revenues and expenses, we would probably have more money budgeted in contingencies and less in unappropriated ending fund balances until we kind of get the rhythm of that biennial budget. So that, so that if there is a spike or if there is a decrease somewhere, we can accommodate that without a, you know, without risking a budget violation.
Yeah, just in terms, so overall for, for feedback, not a question necessarily, but I'm in favor of taking the next step and progressing, exploring what this is, and then maybe an analysis of sort of those year-over-year, I don't know, windfall monies, you know, some revenue sharing allocations, the gas tax share, street fund allocations, and how we look at those at a year-over-year basis and how we would switching this over, I think would be helpful for me, just to see. Thank you.
So we got about 20 minutes left, and if we're going to leave time for everybody to share their thoughts, we should probably get going on that unless somebody has a burning technical question they want to ask real quick, but it needs to be quick.
Hey, Adam?
Yeah?
This is Jerry. Could I, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Chair Hart, and then I'll go to you, Victoria.
And for Jennifer, were there any, did you have any input from any of the other municipalities or districts that are, that have gone to the biennium budgeting system on how they employ their budget committee?
We asked questions about that, and it's, I, I think most communities don't, don't have the kind of relationship that we in McMinnville have developed with their budget committees. They, I don't think they bring them in. They don't tend to bring them in for the off-year. But I just, I can't imagine that being the case in, in our community. And of course, it's, it's our choice to, to do it, but.
And were there any, did you receive any input on how those biennium budgeters try to maintain a level of transparency and public input that, you know, when you only have a budget committee here in every two years, you lose that? So any suggestions or thoughts that you received on that issue?
Not in, not in terms of just general public comment, no. But, but I'm going to write that down because I think that is an important thing that we should think through, how we want to handle that. I think it raises an important issue.
Yeah, and I would note that I'm also on the school district budget committee and, sorry, they do annual budgets, but as pointed out, their funding is so tied into the state that they always have to kind of, you know, they get information from the state on how much is going to be budgeted over the next biennium, and then they have to, you know, parcel that out over two years. It's, and it gets to be really complicated.
Okay.
And much, much different than municipal budgeting. My initial, I was, I was a little negative when I first just kind of read the headline on what this meeting was about, but after thinking about it and after receiving, you know, considering the, the issues, I think, you know, that it does have a lot of merit. It is true that McMinnville, I think, is unusual, unusual in how it employs and utilizes the budget committee. I think most budget committees in cities don't spend nearly as much time as, as our budget committee. And I think that it's been good for the city to kind of expand the role of the budget committee. I do worry about public input and transparency. I, I would whole, I think, wholeheartedly agree to making the change if there was, if it was clear to me on how the transparency and public input would not be diminished. You know, I wrote, I have a little note to myself that maybe something like a, you know, off-year budget review hearing, you know, with the budget committee and, and, you know, getting input from staff and from council on how the, how the year has gone and where we are with the biennium budget. I think that would be very helpful. And invite the public into that process so that they would, they would not be reduced to having just a, an appearance every two years. I think that's really critical and would be very important in, in going forward with this idea.
All right. Thank you, Chair Hart. And last question from committee members.
So I agree that this sounds very promising. It seemed like there was consensus from the survey participants that the, it was a lot of, a lot of workarounds to try to make the software work for this because there just doesn't seem to be anything that exists. And that made me think about staffing issues, just because, like, has that, is there any way to ask those survey, like, those entities that you surveyed if they had a lot of staff turnover, if that was an issue for them? Just because staffing seems to be a perpetual issue for us. And I know in other organizations that I've worked in, when you have a big software change and it doesn't work, that can be really frustrating for employees. And if that's what they're working with all the time, they'll just quit and go somewhere else. And so if, I, I wouldn't want that to happen to us. So if there's more that those survey response entities could elaborate on what kind of effects that had on their staff, I, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. Can look into that and let you all know.
All right. Now we'll just go quick, round robin on final thoughts. We got about 14 minutes left, and I need about two to three of those. So first up is committee member Maxfield.
Unlike what other people have said, I was excited when I saw the subject. I learned about this in my, one of my classes, and my professor was a big fan of biennium budgets. So I want to express support. I think there's great potential. My main concern was just the heavy lift on the side of the staff, but it seems like if the staff is excited about this proposal and they're willing to make the heavy lift, I mean, budget committee member Ernst had a valid point that, I mean, I have seen lots of staff quit when there's software changes, so that's a good point. But I think overall, the potential is greater than the negative, so I'm in full support.
Thank you. Counselor Gary?
Yeah, I'm in full support of taking the next step and learning more about it and seeing more details on the presentation come through. Thank you for bringing it.
Committee member Harmon-Fair?
Similarly, I'd be interested in learning more, but I'm interested in pursuing the idea.
Counselor Chinwet?
I'm definitely interested in moving to a web-based software product. I'm not as interested in moving to the biennial. I wish we would have had some feedback, not just from the staff, but also from the elected officials that made the transition and went through the transition so that we could understand whether they really felt like transparency was not impacted. I don't see anything from the outside of the room telling us whether that transparency was impacted or not in what you presented. And that leaves me a little concerned because I don't know. And I think the importance of a yearly meeting is not the efficiency of staff. It's the importance of the yearly meeting is the ability to give oversight to our community. And that's been said in different ways, but I don't see how we get around that, even if we have some off-year event that makes it look like we're given oversight if the bunny, if the biennial budget's already been decided. So I, I think losing that oversight is very concerning to me for, for the public because that's their time to engage. So I'm very reticent on the biennium, but very interested in moving to a different software product if our staff is willing to make the lift.
Thank you, Counselor Chinwet. Committee members?
I'm supportive of, of staff moving forward and looking into this more. I, I also share the transparency concerns. I think as much time as we all spend with the budget every year, most people in McMinnville don't do that, and we get a lot of feedback that people don't know what's going on already. So I'm, I would be worried that we lose even more of the transparency than we have now. But I think all of that saved staff time could go into some maybe more creative ways that could better reach out to people and get people more engaged than sitting and listening to our budget committee meetings, which don't typically bring a lot of folks in. So I definitely support moving forward and considering it more. Thank you.
And committee member Watney?
Just a quick question. I'm hearing that we're changing software companies, but we're, I don't, didn't think we were doing that. We were just putting an overlay to help the budgetary process. Is that correct?
Correct. We're not exploring a different accounting system.
Thank you. That does- That does make it a lot easier in the bigger picture. I am in full support, and as I said earlier, more than willing to help in the analysis process.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you. Thank you, Adam. The only thing that I heard that really kind of concerned me in the entire presentation was the idea that only a couple of staff are currently trained on the, on the software that we're, that we're using, like, the lack of, of staff backup. I know that's not the main point of, of the evening, but that, that's a red flag, and in particular, if the software that we're using is kind of a kluge where you're kinda hacking together things, and we're really reliant on people who understand just that piece of software. We ran into a problem with that with the COG when we had a retirement, and, you know, software that was configured for that person was problematic, so I'd say stay ahead on that for sure. As far as the two-year budgeting, I think it's fine. I mean, if we can save $200,000 or $300,000 over a two-year period with planning costs, that's a significant savings, and, you know, given that we, we should be looking for places to make cuts, that seems like an appropriate one. The state does two-year budgeting, they have a annual off-year cycle where they can make course corrections to the budget, it's a simpler lift. That part makes a lot of sense to me. So, yeah, I think you should go forward and, and pursue that as an option, and, you know, we'll see if the policy concerns that people have are, are as strong as have been stated.
Thank you. Counselor Payne?
I am on the fence and look forward to learning more.
Thank you. Counselor Minkie?
Well, as I started out, I, I'm in favor of going ahead with this. I personally see that there's opportunities here for more public interaction in the off-year with better financial information and better put together possibly income statements and things like that for various departments. I just feel like there's some real opportunities here after the first year of getting it all together, and I, I know that's gonna be a lift.
You have a final thought, Counselor Peralta?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one other semi-comment, which is that a couple of years ago, when we did the really extended budgeting process when Scott Hill, Scott Hills last year as mayor, that almost felt more like a two-year budget, because we, we did so much planning that affected future years that I just, it's maybe that sort of prepped me for the idea of a longer budget cycle.
Yeah, I, I think the opportunity for more, better, longer-range planning is a nice option here, too. I mean, I know two years isn't really long range, but it, it still opens it up better for everybody to see what's happening.
And Counselor Peralta, are you speaking to when we adjusted our reserve policy?
It was the year that we, we went and did the, the meetings at Kelly, we had a meeting at Kelly's house on the budget, and we were, yeah, the Level 10, all of that. It was a pretty painful process, but.
Gotcha, okay. Level 10, that's all you had to say.
We all have scars.
And Chair Hart, any closing comments?
Oh, I mentioned my concerns about public input and transparency. I'd really like to hear more about that, and I, you know, I gotta be a little bit dubious about the cost savings. I think those are, it's more likely that there'll be some time freed up so that staff can do their primary job, which is not budgeting, but, but serving the public. So, I don't know that there will be any cost savings, there may be additional costs in the, in the, if, if the move is made to go to a biennium budgeting system, just the inherent cost of, of making that change. So, I will look forward to learning more about this.
Thank you Chair Hart. So, initially, when I heard biennium budget, I definitely had reservations about it, just with some of the things that have came up in the last few years. Fortunately, Jennifer, you and your team found that Mack Water and Light surplus that community member Mark Davis spoke about for a number of years that we weren't able to catch in our budget process. And then we had the, the shortfall when we brought the city service fee on, you know, how big would that shortfall have been if we wouldn't have been able to pump the brakes? And we were in a biennium budget cycle. And then we have the dollar fifty that Debbie Harmon Ferry spoke about. And so, those are, you know, surface-level concerns that I have with the biennium budget. As far as the positives, you know, I definitely see where there, there could be some efficiencies and allow staff to work on some other things outside of budgeting. If we were gonna go to this, I would definitely be a hard, only do it if we're gonna go to the same cycle as the state budget, whether that's, you know, the cycle you talked about or it's an additional two years out from there. I think to get me to vote on it, we would need some additional transparency in the coming budget, whether that's moving to a web-based platform to where you could get us quarterly P&Ls like this budget committee's asked for, for a number of years, and we still don't have. So, in order for me to be comfortable on the biennium budget, I'd have to have more current and accurate reporting that we as policymakers could have oversight over. And if going to a web-based platform would, would help your staff generate that and make it more efficient, then I'd be in favor of what Counselor Chinwet proposed of, you know, doing the software now and, and building up to that transition piece, making sure your staff's comfortable with that software and those annual budgets are accurate, and then potentially in, you know, three years, we could move to that biennium budget, once we know that the processes and the SOPs are in place and they're predictable and equitable for transparency in the community. Those are kind of my thoughts on the biennium budget. I, I don't think I have enough information currently to, to be a yes vote in June. And any other final comments or thoughts from committee members before I adjourn the meeting? All right, with that, it's 6:57 PM. Thank you very much for all your guys' engagement, and I'll adjourn tonight's special call budget meeting. We'll take a three-minute break and reconvene at 7:00 for City Council.
Would you like a larger version?
Yes. Wow, thank you.
Yeah, I should say Doris.
But I technically delivered it to you, so.
So, you fulfilled your part of it.
It's a team act.
It's a team act. Thank you very much again. I hope you're a winner.
I guarded two or four hours today, and I've just, it's like. I have this sleeper I can.
All right, if you can take your seats, we'll get started. All right, the time is now 7:03 PM, and I'll call to order our regularly scheduled council meeting on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024, at 7:03 PM, and call on Claudius Cisneros to do roll call.
Counselor Geary?
Good evening.
Counselor Minkie?
Good evening, too.
Counselor Chinwet?
Present.
Counselor Payne?
Present.
Counselor Peralta?
Here.
Mayor Drapkin is absent this evening, and Council President Garvin.
Here. All right, now we have a few, now I will call on our retiring police chief, soon to retire in six months, Matt Scales, please, in the touch of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. All right, that takes us to our proclamations. We have a few this evening. Bear with me on those, and thank you for those in attendance for those. First up, we have our Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, Julius Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas the city of McMinnville is celebrating its 27th year as a certified Tree City USA, as recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Adam Garvin, Council President of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26th, 2024, as Arbor Day. In the city of McMinnville, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. I witness whereof, I have unto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this 23rd day of April, 2024. Thank you. Next up, we have Historic Preservation Month. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation, a nonprofit dedicated to protecting America's historic buildings, landscapes, and neighborhoods, established an annual celebration of historic preservation across the country. And whereas this celebration, known as National Historic Preservation Month, was first established and observed by the National Trust for Historic Preservation in 1973. And whereas the National Historic Preservation Month is now observed in the month of May every year throughout the country, and whereas the city of McMinnville has a rich history as the primary social and economic center of Yamhill County, of the Yamhill County region. And whereas the McMinnville Downtown Historic District, the economic center of our city focused on Third Street, is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Whereas the city of McMinnville promotes and protects its historic buildings and sites throughout, through a locally adopted historic resource inventory managed by the Historic Landmarks Committee, which includes numerous buildings and sites dating back as far as 1853. And whereas the protection of her, of our historic resources enhances the economic vitality of our community, beautifies our built environments, and instills in our community members a sense of pride in the historic importance of the city of McMinnville. Now therefore, I, Adam Garvin, Council President of the City of McMinnville, do by hereby proclaim May 2024 as Historic Preservation Month. In the city of McMinnville, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Historic Preservation Month and support efforts to protect our valued historic resources throughout the city, and witness whereof, I have unto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this 23rd day of April, 2024. And thank you to our downtown association president, who is here and oversees some of those historic buildings and businesses. I'm gonna take a quick drink of water before the third one. All right, next up, we have National Economic Development Week proclamation, which that whole back rail is a part of. Whereas McMinnville is fortunate to have four economic development organizations that partner with the city to ensure our community continues to thrive. This group is known as the Stable Table, works collaboratively to help ensure the economic growth and diversity of our community. This group is comprised of the McMinnville Area Chamber of Commerce, the McMinnville Downtown Association, McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, and Visit McMinnville. And whereas each organization provides a unique perspective, represent, representative of consistency important to the growth and future of our community, whereas McMinnville's economic vitality leaders promote economic well-being and quality of life for this community by attracting, retaining, and expanding high-quality jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic development partners attract and retain a diversity of businesses which create a vibrant community and improves the quality of life in the region. And whereas McMinnville aspires to accelerate and incubate entrepreneurism and innovation to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is a hallmark. All right, next up we have National Economic Development Week proclamation, which that whole back rail is a part of. Whereas McMinnville is fortunate to have four economic development organizations that partner with the city to ensure our community continues to thrive. This group is, uh, known as the Stable Table, works collaboratively to help ensure the economic growth and diversity of our community. This group is comprised of the McMinnville Area Chamber of Commerce, the McMinnville Downtown Association, McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, and Visit McMinnville. And whereas each organization provides a unique perspective represent, representative of, uh, consistency important to the growth and future of our community, whereas McMinnville's economic vitality leaders promote economic well-being and quality of life for this community by attracting, retaining, and expanding high-quality jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic development partners attract and retain a diversity of businesses which create a vibrant community and improves the quality of life in the region. And whereas McMinnville aspires to accelerate and incubate entrepreneurism and innovation to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is a hallmark of a healthy economy. And whereas these partners do everything they can to support our local businesses, help them through the hurdles of startups, nurturing their growth, and celebrating their longevity. Whereas these partners provide leadership and excellence in economic development for this community, their respective membership base, and partner through opportunities, networking, training courses, advisory service, services, and research publications, marketing, public policy advocacy, and initiatives, as well as execute the vision of the strategic plan for the economic vitality of the city outlined in the MAC Town two thousand thirty-two. And whereas these partners are focused on accelerating the growth in family wage jobs, maintaining McMinnville's positive business climate, expanding talent and attraction efforts, being a leader in hospitality and place-based tourism, and improve infrastructure to better serve local businesses, visitors, and residents. Whereas our economic vitality partners work in the city of McMinnville within the state of Oregon, now therefore I, Adam Garvin, Council President of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim May sixth through tenth, two thousand twenty-four as National Economic Development Week. In the city of McMinnville, and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and improve the quality of life. I also invoke, I also invite all to visit IEDcallonline.org/EDW to learn more about Economic Development Week. I witness whereof I have unto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed this twenty-third day, April two thousand twenty-four. Would any of our Stable Table partners like to say anything or come up for a photo? I see a camera back there. So we have Patty from MEDP, Doris Towery from McMinnville Downtown Association, and then our new chamber president, John. All right, I think I got my reading done, Superintendent. All right, that takes us to our public comment portion of tonight's meeting. Um, this is a part of the meeting where any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-jugicelanduse matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments will be limited at three minutes per person for a total of thirty minutes. If you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom to request, request to speak. Once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic, or you may send a chat directly to our city recorder, and we will announce you. Please announce your name and the city you live in for the record. And Claudia, do we have any comment cards?
Yes, we'll start with Mark Davis.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Council President Garvin, members of the council. Um, I'd like to tag on to your discussion about the biennial budget. Um, I'm, I'm more or less supportive of it. I don't have a strong feeling about it. One concern I have is that if we go to a biennial budget, the one time of the year that I actually get to see a current financial statement is when you do the budgets and I can actually see what's going on in the current year. I heard Doris Towery, you mentioned the importance of financial statements. I've talked about this before, and I really think if we're talking about priorities, creating a new budgeting system versus getting some financial statements, I'm much more in favor of monthly or at least quarterly financial statements so everybody knows what's going on. I mean, if you want the public to be informed and to be able to make comments at your budget hearings, you gotta have, be given them some information during the year. I mean, the way this, the system operates now, it's, it's, you know, against transparency. So I, that's, you know, the, the, the message I would give you. And, you know, this is totally just listening to what I heard, so this, I may be totally off-base here, but I heard that we need new budgeting software, and then our existing software won't easily generate financial statements. Well, it seems to me like maybe what we need is new financial software that does budgeting the way we want to do it, that creates financial statements and generates the information we need. I mean, I'm, you know, that's just from me listening in the audience, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next up.
Next, we have William Sykes. He also is bringing a hard copy of a document which you have in front of you on the, on your, I was gonna say dais, on the U shape, um, and it will be entered into the record tomorrow.
Thank you. And before you start the timer, I would just let you know, I did print out my words, but the printer didn't work right, so I'm gonna read off my phone. Thank you.
Sounds good, and thank you for joining us again.
Thank you. Thank you, esteemed council, esteemed councils, council members and others. My name is William Sykes from McMinnville. My topic is loud vehicles and exhibition of speed. I approached the council on this topic December twelve, two thousand twenty-three, January twenty-three, February twenty-seven, and March twenty-sixth. This is my fifth visit here. I trust my messages have been well received. Thank you, News Register, for covering this. Thank you, Chief Scales, for the email. My favorite thing to read here is municipal, McMinnville Municipal Code eight ten two sixty. However, tonight, I read from ORS eight one five zero two five, that became a law in nineteen ninety-five and was amended since in two thousand five. ORS eight one five zero two five. A person commits the offense of causing unreasonable noise with a vehicle if the person operates upon any highway, any motor vehicle, so as to cause greater noise or sound than is reasonably necessary for the proper operation of the vehicle. This offense described in this section, causing unreasonable noise with a vehicle, is a Class D traffic violation, as I understand it. Thank you again, Chief Scales, for the email. Other than that communication, it has been me and other citizens asking for help unanswered. Little to no progress has been made that I'm aware of, the people speaking to the leaders with no response. There are more and more of these loud cars each day. Some of these cars sound like guns with the pop, pop, pop. You've all heard it. I could see how it would be hard to tell the difference between a real gunshot on Third Street and one of these cars driving around. A real gunshot, one that occurred on Thursday, August eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, at ten PM in front of Serendipity Ice Cream Parlor. I take my kids there every weekend. Since we have not made much ground here, I would like to pivot the discussion and offer a plan in the form of a proposal. I've shared the proposal with you and with Claudia, then outlined some steps so that we can move forward here. This initiative is one of my, of many that will make our streets safer and quieter in McMinnville. Now I will quote the outline of the proposed initiative. Number one, identify a city councilperson to be the champion and own this from a city leadership standpoint. If applicable, create a committee, create a plan, publish the plan, follow up with the people of McMinnville. Number two, identify a law enforcement contact who will help identify the following. What specific laws, if any, are being broken, broken? If laws are being broken, then why are they not enforced? If being broken, then what will it take to enforce the laws? More technology? More police officers? What is the best way to inform law enforcement when these violations are occurring? Build a plan with all parties, including the public, where goals are measurable and achievable in a timely manner. Please, City Council, let's continue this conversation. Please join us at StopTheNoiseMac.com. StopTheNoiseMAC.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes.
Uh, next we have Amanda Westfall.
Hi, it's me again. Um, I just, hello, I'm Amanda Westfall from McMinnville, Oregon. Um, I just wanted to say again, um, that we need more bike lanes. Oh, I was gonna read something on my phone. Oh, well. Um, specifically around schools, and I'm not coming to you guys from a person who rides my bike all the time. I'm coming to you, um, as a mom whose kids ride their bikes all the time. And, um, specifically my son, who rides his bike every day to school to Dunaway, and there are zero bike lanes for him to use. Um, I was gonna read just like stats about, well, just like my fellow city dweller here, just some good, good old-fashioned stats about why bike lanes create a safer space to live, um, create safer sidewalks. Um, if there's a bike lane, then an officer can ask a person on a bike to use the bike lane. Um, if there's no bike lane, then they can't really do that. Um, you know, that kind of thing. Also, just as drivers, I saw on the community discussions board, um, some, I believe a high school student was, uh, didn't feel safe riding because there were no bike lanes and like cars were like veering anyway, is the whole thing. I just think our city is so perfect to be an amazing bike community because it's so flat here. Like, it's the perfect Amsterdam, and Amsterdam meaning seventy percent of their, uh, population ride bikes. It's like, there's no giant hills in the city center. It's just like, so amazing. And the weather is temperate, so you're not having to ride your bike in the ice or like a hundred twenty-degree weather. So anyway, um, yeah, more bike lanes, or just at least we could start with just like around the schools. That would be amazing. Or if there's no room for the lanes themselves, at least those bike markers, like letting, letting car drivers know, driver, letting drivers know that, hey, bikes are okay here. They're allowed to be here. Please watch out. Just any kind of signage, um, would be amazing. Cause I care about my son and I care about all the kids. I'm also a substitute teacher and I know a lot of kids, um, who ride their bikes. And I knew one kid I just met the other day who fell off his bike and anyway, it was a whole thing. Lots of kids ride bikes, so we should be looking out for our kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, that's everyone that signed up.
And has anybody messaged on Zoom?
Uh, not yet.
All right, last call for anybody on Zoom to use the raise your hand feature or direct message. Claudia? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. That takes us to reports from councilors on committee and board assignments. Uh, first up, we'll go with Kelly, Counsel Minkie.
My only report tonight is on YCAP. I had an hour meeting today with Alexandra. And I've been concerned over the last number of months because they've been without a CFO. Their CFO left in September and, uh, we, they interviewed and hired someone who started mid-January, but things have not happened that should happen. And so I, when I got there today, I found out that the CFO has left and they are now looking for a new one. Hopefully we'll be recruiting within the next ninety days, which is very important. The good news is that they've had a, an interim person who is supposed to be helping her that is going to step up and take care of it. And he's only working for YCAP now, not for two other companies. So that's a good thing. Um, on the positive, uh, they finished the OHS, OACS audit, and they had all positive responses. There were no findings on that particular audit. Uh, most of this is finance-related because I'm the treasurer. ADP, uh, any door place is scheduled to be completed May twenty-fourth, and then there'll be a week to finish up the punch list for the contractor. And then YCAP has about nine items on their list of things that have to happen to get the place open. But they are currently hiring and making sure that everything will be ready. Yes.
Do you mean that they're gonna be open and operational on May twenty?
No, no. The building will be done, but YCAP still has a number of things they have to do to make it actually operational. But I anticipate that they will be done by the end of June, so they're working hard on it, trying to get everything ready before it's necessary. Um, okay, another, uh, positive thing, uh, the declaration has been signed by OHA for the eight hundred and ninety thousand dollar grant that is supposed to be received by YCAP through Yamhill County. The, uh, grant has been recorded by Yamhill County and has been forwarded to the county attorney and also sent to Lindsay Manfred. Uh, this grant is important because there's a, a significant amount of asbestos remediation that needs to happen at turnkey and also electrical work. And they have both, the asbestos remediation has to happen first and then the electrical. If, uh, they do receive the grant, which is hopeful, uh, it should, um, extend their total rooms to seventy. And let's see, is there anything else? Uh, they also have a, a grant from Sheridan of two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Sheridan has caused, has made them a subrecipient, and, uh, that will also be used with the sub, uh, to help with the turnkey, uh, operation. And I think that's all I've got for you this evening on YCAP.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Minkie. Uh, Counsel Payne?
Neither of my, none, none of the three of my committees have met since our last council meeting. Thank you.
Counsel Peralta?
Council of Governments Legislative Committee is meeting Monday, but we canceled the meeting, uh, sorry, monthly, but we canceled the meeting this past month. Um, McMinnville Community Media is partnering with Gallery Theater volunteers to produce Gallery Theater presents a show focused on upcoming productions and behind-the-scenes content from Gallery Theater. The Writing Life, hosted by Steve Long, recently passed its one-hundredth, uh, episode milestone, so congratulations to them. And the Saturday Film Club is in pre-production for its sixth short film project, and they're seeking local actors for three adult roles. Zach, this is your chance. Casting call will be available on the MCM eleven website.
Thank you, Counsel Peralta. Counselor Geary?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Thank you, Council President. All three of my meeting, uh, committees met over the last couple of weeks. Economic and Vitality Leadership Council met. Um, we've been working on trying to, um, appropriate the Nobel Grant, and we are reaching fruition on what we have been working to accomplish. Thank you very much to MEDP. Um, the, um, we're going to help Chamecata create a program where, whereby folks can get their, uh, phlebotomy endorsements directly through Chamecata as a, as a training process, which should help, um, the hospitals and the medical community. Um, the hospital is gonna have a cohorts program where they will be, uh, having interns fifteen hours a week, twenty hours, twenty dollars per hour for eight weeks, um, that will hopefully get them up to speed and get them interested in a medical career, um, and kind of get them quickly into that pathway. Um, they are saying they'll be able to do five of these interns at a time, which would be exciting to help this process along. Um, the hospitality and tourism, uh, uh, area of our economy will be having a hiring event at the high school. It may have already passed by now. Has it passed? No, it's coming up. May thirtieth, um, at the high school, um, that will be, uh, you know, in the past, we've done kind of these mock interviews at the high school. This won't be a mock interview. This will be the opportunity for folks to actually get hired. Um, and that, so that's exciting. Um, we also have, uh, helped to fund skill, a skilled trades mentorship program that will allow, um, skilled trade professionals to come into the high school, work alongside students, um, in a mentorship partnership format that will help them learn more skills than they might have otherwise, uh, learned by just working with the teachers. Not to disparage the teachers, but just to say to have that professional in the classroom, um, will, will add to their skill building. They're also continuing to build the business database. Um, we also heard in that meeting that, um, the RFQ for the master plan for the Innovation Campus and Commercial Zone Overlay District with development standards in place is now gone out. Um, we're down, I think they said we're down to two or three potentials. So we're coming close to having an RFQ, or not, uh, RFQ, but having a master plan begin to be developed. As you may remember, we provided funds for that through ARPA. Um, the Historic Landmarks Committee met and discussed the six oh nine northeast Third Street Building, their request to add lighting, conduit, and signage to the facade of that building, um, for the upcoming new business that's going into six oh nine northeast Third Street. Um, and that was, uh, pushed through And that was pushed through with some requirements put upon the builders or the developer. And then, last was Parkway Committee met. Cross your fingers, this thing goes to bid June 2nd. This thing being Phase 2A, which is the interchange at, oh, my brain just went dead.
McDougal Corner?
No, interchange at Wilsonville Road, basically, but where the bypass tees in right now. The interchange right there. There is some discussion about more funding coming into McDougal Corner, so we might see in the next couple, three years, some work being done out at McDougal Corner to clean up what is arguably the most dangerous intersection in all of Oregon. That's my reports.
Thank you, Councilor Chinwet. Airport Commission hasn't met. YCOM did meet for a brief meeting, looks like probably have a round of 3% rate increase next year. Visit McMinnville met as well. There's a couple vacancies on that board, so we are reaching out to the News Register, as well as I believe it'll go in the city newsletter, about the two vacancies on that. All applications are due by May 8th. Interviews will take place the 13th through the 17th, and then we'll present the top three candidates May 20th. And as far as what we're looking for, explore opportunities to become part of Visit McMinnville, the premier destination management organization serving the vibrant city of McMinnville. We're currently seeking passionate individuals to join our esteemed Board of Directors in voluntary nonprofit leadership roles. Ideal candidates will bring expertise from the hospitality, food and beverage, lodging, or cultural attraction sectors, committing to a minimum three-year term. So, if that sounds like you or somebody you know, make sure you fill out the application in either English or Spanish, which you can find on the Visit McMinnville website. And that's all I have for my reports tonight, so we'll move on to department heads. And first up, we have City Manager Jeff Towery.
Nothing to report tonight, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Nothing from the legal department tonight. Thank you.
Police Chief?
I'm not gonna let this opportunity go. Real quickly, I wanted to give a quick shout-out to our patrol section and our detectives. As you guys all probably had heard, there was a shooting downtown on the 11th of April. There was some really good work that happened with our, between the patrol and the investigation section and apprehending the two suspects. And I will also give kudos to the US Marshals. Thank you to them for their assistance in capturing one of them down in Albany. I'm gonna real quickly touch on some hiring. Obviously, we're in that continued hiring push. We've got a couple people still in active training. We've got one lateral in active training, a couple at the academy, two unconditional job offers out, and one of which is lateral, the other will not need academy, so that's gonna increase the pace of getting people on the road. And then, lastly, we have, I believe Captain Simons is, let me know, we have about 10 people coming in for interviews in the coming weeks. So, hiring push continues. I'd like to also add that between the county, HHS, county commissioners, the cities of Newburgh, McMinnville, Yamhill, Carlton, as well as the district attorney's office, there's been a great deal of work already being done with respect to HB 4002, the recriminalization, obviously, with the, with the need to set up a deflection program, that's this term being used, but that work is being done weekly, sometimes twice a week in meetings. And I think there's some strong efforts being done to come up with a plan moving forward for our officers to assist those that wish to engage in treatment, beginning September 1st. So, there's about, I believe, close to 500,000 that the state is going to allocate to counties. And I believe we're well on our way to identifying some avenues in personnel costs, at least I think that will be covered through that, those monies. So, good work being done there. Lastly, I want to let you know, I did finish my term this last week as OACP President. It was a pleasure. I was really, really pleased with the work that the chiefs and sheriffs and district attorneys, as well as League of Oregon Cities Association of Counties, did in the legislative session. And the kudos really doesn't go to the board or the executive committee. It goes to all our members and the continued commitment to make our cities as safe as possible. So, I am done with that. I'm now the past president, and I look forward to some, some calm a little bit, so that's what I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership in that. IT Director Scott Burke?
Nothing for the council tonight. Thank you, President.
All right, Jeff with a G?
Nothing from public works this evening.
Thank you. Anything further, Jennifer?
Yeah, just to let folks know that we are zeroing in on completing the budget document for fiscal '24, '25, so that should be out in a week-ish, so we'll let folks know. And also, just want to let you know that we have been working on some content for the staff training that we're doing on capital accounting that came out of the, the action plan for last year's findings that we had in our audit, so that's moving forward. And that's, that's it from finance.
Thank you so much. Anything from our deputy recorder?
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Anything from our city recorder?
Nothing for the council.
Thank you. Refer you to your packet for the February 24 cash and investment reports. Any questions on that? Hearing none, that takes us to our consent agenda. Now would be the time, if any counselor would like to request to have an item removed from the consent agenda and hurried at its regular place on the agenda. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like to move the consent agenda forward.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilor Peralta and a second by Councilor Menke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes 5 to 0. All right, that takes us to our ordinance this evening. We'll consider the first reading with possible second reading of ordinance number 5144. I'll ask if any council member needs to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance. Hearing none. Does any council member object to having ordinance number 5144 read by title only? Hearing none, I'll call on City Attorney David Leitenberg to please read ordinance for title only.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5144. An ordinance amending McMinnville Municipal Code Section 8.36.010 to adopt a local definition of the word "established" for purposes of camping and Section 8.36.030, adopting additional time, place, or manner regulations for camping and banning open flames.
All right, and now I'll call on City Attorney to present, and I believe he has PowerPoint, which you should have in your inbox as well.
Thank you all. This is the culmination of a number of discussions. I will be remarking on what are three significant changes to the camping code, as well as three minor cleanup issues. And I will pause after each one of those for questions. The first major effort in this ordinance, as discussed, is a redefinition of the word You may recall from our earlier discussions that when the city of McMinnville adopted a definition of the word "established" in its code regulating camping on city property, it was apparently attempting to clarify a particular enforcement issue. It was not presumptively defining what would thereafter become a relevant term in state law. This was done in February of '21, and the legislative session that followed that made "established" a term in state law. However, when the state then used the term "established camping site" in ORS, what is now ORS 195, 505, the city's definition already fit into the most conservative approach to the 72-hour notice requirement therein, namely, if a campsite is immediately established, then any campsite requires 72 hours' notice prior to abatement. Thus, since 2021, the McMinnville Police Department policy has treated every placement of camp facilities and/or camp paraphernalia as an established campsite, regardless of the duration it had been in place. It must be noted that a number of Oregon jurisdictions have already recognized what appears to be a meaningful distinction between a campsite and an established campsite. If the state legislature had intended the 72-hour notice requirement to apply to any campsite, it could have said as much. In Medford, Bend, Salem, and Corvallis, cities have defined "established" as being in existence at least some period of time. Based on a small survey we did of those jurisdictions, that time that they have set is between 24 hours and five days. If we tonight, or with this ordinance, redefine "established," this is how that would work on the ground. Right now, all camping is just camping in the city. This would draw a more clear line between temporary camping, which is allowed between 9:30 PM and 6:30 AM in places where it is not otherwise prohibited. There is a map in Exhibit A of your packets that reflects the earlier maps you've seen in this also, where streets that are red, and technically, those that are orange as well, indicate places where camping may take place. That is between the hours of 9:30 PM and 6:30 AM. When a campsite is temporary, under a redefinition of the word "established," it could then be enforced or abated immediately upon a time or place violation. That is, if it were in place after 6:30 AM, or if it were in a place like a park, where there is no possibility of legal temporary camping. On the other hand, established camping would be camping that has met the timeline definition of our word "established" here. This would be camping that is technically not allowed anywhere in the city of McMinnville, but is subject to the state 72-hour notice requirement. This is, this would be camps basically in the situation that you are familiar with, camps that are established that can only be abated after a notice period. Proposed language for the redefinition is in front of you here. Sorry, I've got a window blocking. Give me a moment. Established means having been in a single location, or returned or relocated to within 1,000 feet of a single location during a period of at least five days. If law enforcement personnel do not have evidence about the age of a campsite, law enforcement personnel should presume it is an established campsite. I would like to draw your attention to a number of key components of this proposed definition. The first is the period of at least five days. This recommendation for the ordinance is, of course, something that you could request to be changed, but has been made at the recommendation of the police department. This would allow better enforcement. It would allow more ease of getting things lined up to be able to afford, to enforce before something becomes established. Now, you should know, as mentioned earlier, while a number of cities have defined "established" as being in existence over some period, five days is the longest that only matches the city of Medford. You'll see toward the beginning of the definition where if somebody has returned or relocated to within 1,000 feet of a single location, that's intended to clean up some enforcement difficulties we have had thus far, particularly with some fairly savvy campers who, upon receiving 72 hours' notice, leave and come back, or move not too far away, saying that they have moved based on the notice requirement. This clarifies that that would not count as moving to a new place. The 1,000 feet is a holdover from the city's previous definition here. This is a number that is, that was chosen by council at that time. It is a number that could be reconsidered if that were something you wished to do. But I would like to point out that this was previously chosen. If we are to continue comparing to Medford, which much of this is, Medford's distance is 500 feet. And then, I would draw your attention to the last sentence here. That is one, again, taken wholesale from the city of Medford, and I think that it is a good sentence to include. The evidence mentioned here could take a variety of forms, including whether a space was cleared of all campsites fewer than five days prior, whether patrol officers had observed the area free from campsites, or other credible evidence. Regardless, the proposed definition does not place homeless individuals in the position of having to prove that their tent was in place for more than five days. You'll remember previously, we talked about making efforts to ensure that these sorts of regulations were reasonable with regard to all parties. This is an effort to make it so that campers don't have a huge burden to make all sorts of proof in addition to having their campsites. That is as much as I have for the definition of "established." Can I entertain any questions for this part of the ordinance thus far?
Any questions around "established"? Councilor Geary?
Not necessarily a question, just, I guess, maybe turn it over to the chief for a minute. I heard at the request of, of the PD for some additional language, so maybe you can just talk us through your experiences, what you think this will allow you to do, not allow you to do. Is there anything that we left on the table, or just, just give your perspective on this?
Our, our perspective is in alignment with what the city attorney has mentioned through his presentation, that five days in this redefinition, revamping of "established," certainly gives us time. It allows for officers, you know, over holiday weekends, et cetera, extended weeks, extended times away, to still, if there's information that the camp was not there previously, within that five-day period, to address it immediately. So, I think this does get us over the hump. I believe, I'm not gonna be Pollyannish, I mean, it's not gonna be all clearing up of every camp because it's just simply a manpower issue, but this certainly, this, this definition being codified in the way it's being recommended certainly gives us tools necessary to abate things more quickly. They will, they'll, or I think those that have experienced areas, whether it's in residential or even out in the industrial area, could see immediate relief rather than 72 hours at a minimum, you know, as we've talked about, some of those are longer before we can get an abatement out there. So, I think this does move the needle. Period.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Any further questions, Councilor Geary? Any other questions around the word "established" before David moves on? All right, thank you, David.
The next major issue that we are taking a look at is that of school buffers. The proposed language would go in 8.36.030, which already lists a number of places where camping is strictly prohibited, not during the hours of 9:30 PM to 6:30 AM, not at all. That includes city parks, that includes residential areas, and you've seen the rest of this. This would add to within 250 feet from a lot or parcel. This would add to within 250 feet from a lot or parcel containing an elementary or secondary school. It should be noted that despite previous conversations talking about to what degree this might change things, based on a recent and careful look at the map, which I believe you've got a large copy near you, this actually does very little to change what is already forbidden for camping in the city. Your staff reports say, actually, I will jump to the next bit, before getting into Despite the fact that this changes very little, it does cover all schools regardless of any future zoning changes or school construction. It makes that unambiguous. And it also protects from possible reunderstandings of our own maps. As you'll see, we already have looked at them more carefully now and have seen something slightly different. In your report, I had mentioned that northeast of Patton, there was a difference. That's not true. You'll see that the pink line intersects the red line only northwest of Patton. So not on McDaniel Lane, but on McDonald Lane is the only tangible difference that we see with this addition of a school buffer. And that black line on McDaniel is because Wortman Park actually falls in a residential zone. It's already not permitted under another portion of this law. This is an example of the other place we talked about with camping next to Sue Buell. As you'll see, the buffer zone only touches black roads. That is where camping is already not permitted. That is because Sue Buell and up to the edge of that black line going west, north of the road, is already a residential zone. That is what I have for school buffers. Can I entertain any questions about school buffers?
Counselor Gary?
In your legal review, when we talk about propping this up, we associate it, do we associate it with a property's use or a property's zoning?
Sorry, the proposed language for the ordinance?
Correct.
The proposed language for the ordinance is, is any lot that contains a primary or secondary school. So that would be a use. It is not a zoning issue.
Okay.
I'm just indicating that the zoning as already stands, as it already stands, already makes these places where camping is prohibited in the same way.
Right, because, you know, the zoning for Patton is already R2. It's already a residential zone.
Right.
So it's decoupled from the zoning, it's associating it with the use on the zoning, and we're defining it as, say it again...
Sorry, I would like to get it right. Let me find that exactly. Within 200 feet, 250 feet from a lot or parcel containing an elementary or secondary school.
Okay. That's my question on that.
Counselor Chinwath?
Thank you, Council President. My memory of the discussion when we met with the school board was that they, that the superintendent had asked for 250 feet and school pathways. And then, as that conversation continued, my memory as council president ended with something along the lines of 1,000 feet is what's going to actually clear that zone for the kids that are trying to travel back and forth to school. And when I look at this map, if the intent is to create a safe passageway, and I brought this up at that joint meeting, there are a lot of kids that are walking from the north side, northwest side, of McDonald's Restaurant, coming across 99 West. There are a lot of kids coming from the northeast down McDonald Street, coming across 99 West, both walking toward Patton. And it is the McDaniel Lane that is the bigger problem of the two, but this doesn't actually address the concern that caused all of this to get brought before us. So I guess I would say, I would like us to move this back to the 1,000 feet that was discussed in that joint meeting as what it's going to take to clear that pathway.
Counselor Gary, do you have a follow-up question?
Right, so in the area in red, after 6:30 AM, I can't camp there.
That's correct.
So on the walk to school, it is already illegal to be camped in the red area.
That's correct.
Okay.
Follow-up questions around school buffer zones, and Counselor Payne?
Thank you. First, I just want to offer, I feel like if we're going to keep using the map, maybe it should be accurate. So like Booth Bend, for instance, is kind of restricted as far as camping, because somebody could not park in the ditch. So I just want to make sure that we're working off a reliable map. I am a little bit broken-hearted, as a parent of children that attend McMinnville Public Schools, to have the industrial area south of Booth, or south of Buell included, because there are relatively compliant and clean houseless neighbors that park there. But I understand the blanket need for an ordinance. My question about this specific 8.36.030 under 5A, or 5, I think it was, was it doesn't reference public or private schools, so I'm thinking like McMinnville Adventist Academy and the Monastery School, so I just don't know if there's the need for that type of specificity in the code.
I would, just because I, David might not know geographically where those are located at, McMinnville Adventist School is encapsulated in that memorial boundary, and it's in a fully residential zone, so it's a mute point on the map. The Monastery School, I'm not exactly sure where it's located.
Is it residential? I thought it was partially commercial.
Yeah, except they border commercial.
First, okay.
Does that help you, Counselor Payne, on those two?
I guess, well, the, yeah, I mean, I'm thinking about like Baker Creek School, which that's, Baker Creek School's a huge campus.
Yeah, and it's fully in a residential zone, there's no red around there.
Yeah. Yeah, without pulling up the zoning map, I don't have anything additional, but I would encourage this map to be accurate of what's allowed, what's not allowed, and what's allowed but physically restricted.
All right, any other questions around buffer zones? And with that, any further discussion around Counselor Chinwath's ask of the 1,000 feet? I know it is called out in our packet as far as the amount of miles of road in the city versus miles of road left for the evening camping to be utilized. I think that's really where you, you know, that's kind of where you move that needle on risk as far as what we're opening ourselves up to. So there's about six miles left of campable road after you remove the allowed but physically restricted area. It's about 31,000 feet, by my MacHi math, so if you want to remove more feet from that, you know, I don't know exactly what that would be. I'm not going to do any napkin math on that one, but I do understand your point, Counselor Chinwath. I did make that at the joint work session, and that going to 1,000 feet is the only way you get that Patton buffer up to 99W.
You know, I don't see it, maybe I'm wrong, but what I'm seeing is maybe four city blocks. And the intent was, I think Sal did a good job of pointing this out, that the intent initially with our time, place, and manner was to actually protect around schools, and we missed a section. And we're not hitting that section even with this. We still leave the same exact pieces of road uncovered that were already uncovered, because as he, our lawyer pointed out, it doesn't even, what we're doing doesn't touch the red except for like, what, 50 feet on McDonald. It doesn't do anything with McDaniel. So, I get that, yeah, I got that right. So I feel like we're not really accomplishing what the intent was, which was to make this pathway safer for kids.
Chief Skiles?
I just want to say that I think it's important to note that camping between 6:30 AM and 9:30 PM is not allowed, period, regardless of where the vehicle or the camps are. I think that's important.
I have a question.
Yeah, Counselor Peralta?
Thanks.
And then I'll go back to you, Counselor Chinwath.
So my impression was that this ordinance, the changes to this ordinance gives the police the ability to immediately abate unlawful camps under certain circumstances. So I think that addresses the issue that you're raising, Chris, which is that you're worried that kids are going to walk along a campsite, but in driving those two lanes, it seems like the main areas where people were camping were capturing with this ordinance. And the other part of the ordinance that captures the behavior is allowing police to make the immediate abatement, which didn't exist until, well, it doesn't exist now, but will exist when we pass the ordinance. So I don't feel strongly about it. I mean, if people want to go to a bigger area, I don't think it's going to make really that much difference. I'm inclined to kind of go with the attorney's recommendations and legal analysis, but mostly because I don't think that adding in another 1,000 feet is going to make that much of a difference. And I didn't hear that many people, I mean, you very eloquently in that school board meeting talked about that, but I didn't hear anybody else really kind of pushing along that line. So I may be wrong if others on the council had a different perspective, but that's my view.
City Manager Towery?
Just want to note, thanks, Counselor Payne, for the observation about Booth Bend Road. There are actually planned improvements to Booth Bend over the next couple of years, so that'll actually change the ability of folks to lawfully camp on that stretch of road over, as those improvements are made.
Thank you. And City Attorney, did you have anything you wanted to add before I keep going with questions?
Not unless you have a direct question.
Okay. Counselor Chinwath, you had some follow-up?
Well, I just, we currently, it's not allowed for them to camp there. And currently, and for the last several years, they've been camping there. And so, and I understand that this ordinance should give us, on the first portion of this, should give you the leverage that you need. I get that. But that also requires police officers, which, you'll have to forgive me, I'm a little, I don't want to say this.
Counselor Chinwath, what I hear you asking for is that you would like to prevent them from camping there 24/7, not just between 6:30 AM and 9:30 PM?
I would, and I also would like to kind of give the residents what they asked for, and what the school board seemed to be asking for, and to, in your comments, and I appreciate what you had to say, Counselor Peralta, you know, that ended with council president making the same ask of 1,000 feet. And so I wasn't alone in the sentiment, and I just, if there's no, I just, if there's no further potential lawsuit, I feel like the better thing to do for the community is to give the ask that was asked of us at the 1,000 feet.
But there is a potential for lawsuit, at least until the Supreme Court comes down with perhaps something different.
Counselor Gary?
Thank you. I think that the suite of enforcement-related items in this ordinance will be miles more effective on moving the needle on the problem that we're seeing. I think this buffer zone being purely a language and mapping item is more of a feels-right solution. If people need to know that we've laid a buffer blanket around the schools to feel safer, then we should do that. I don't feel comfortable sprawling out thousands of feet and growing that safety blanket. And I'm speaking as a parent who has a child that will be walking to all the schools for the next 10 years, and I would love it if this whole city was a guaranteed safety blanket. But at some point, we have to balance everything, and I think that this 250-foot buffer achieves what we're after. I think the suite of enforcement-related items that we're also seeing are going to do more to achieve that actual safety rather than the feel of safety. So for that, I would support the staying at the 250, not necessarily increasing it.
I've made my argument eloquently, but I do want to say one thing. There has been noticeable improvement on enforcement, so I don't want anything to come across like I'm not appreciative of what's happening, because there has been
Counselor McGee?
Chief, I do agree, there has been noticeable improvement, and it's delightful to hear about, actually. I personally feel the 250-foot barrier answers what's been asked for. That, and then the other changes with the, some of the wording, the "established" wording and things like that. So I am positive about this.
All right, any other things around buffer zones?
I just want to just express that I'm just generally not in favor of 1,000 feet. I think 250 is sufficient, so I don't know, you know, I mean, we're talking about the ordinance specifically, so I'm just going to put my position out there.
Sounds good. In GPS technology, it's about, what is that? About 1,440 feet if we went to 1,000-foot buffer instead of a 250-foot buffer, that you're pulling off of that 31, 31,680 feet of remaining in the city. So I'll leave that there.
More question?
Oh, Counselor Gary?
So confirming that I did hear you write, it's around elementary and secondary schools. Pleading ignorance, is the high school a secondary school? It is classified as a secondary school, so this will apply to the high school.
Yes.
Will it apply to the sports fields that are associated with that?
That's why we chose the language, "a lot or parcel containing."
Okay.
So yes, it should include the sports fields.
Very good, thank you.
Anything else around buffer zones? And just to clarify, Counselor Peralta, you wanted to stay at 250?
Sure.
And Counselor Payne, 250, and Counselor McGee, 250? Counselor Gary, 250? All right, looks like we can move on with the 250.
The third major change being proposed with the ordinance tonight is a ban on open flames. Proposed language is simple. No person shall start or maintain any fire or open flame in or around a campsite. The last bit of that, "in or around a campsite," is an effort to distinguish this from backyard campfires, barbecues in the park, to distinguish this from as much as we could. State code already provides that keeping warm and dry, which is a requirement, does not include using any measure that involves fire or flame. This is as good a point as any to point out to you that yesterday, the Supreme Court heard oral arguments on the Grants Pass case. We don't know where that's going to put us, but you should know that the justices asked questions about whether keeping warm and asked questions about whether keeping warm and dry means fires, means whether, um, incidents of just living involves being able to cook food. There's a chance that this is being considered, or will be considered, in a new way at the federal level. I am not able to speak to that, or even hazard a guess as to the direction that that will go, however, currently, this is called out in state code, and this was a clear enough measure and straightforward step to take, um, as requested by our fire district. Before I get into them, does anybody have questions on the forms?
Um, my only question would be is if we could add "and/or" city property to that, and then that would encapsulate all our parks and, uh, city parking lots and, you know, trash collection areas where we've seen open flame issues in the past.
"In or around a campsite and/or city property," I would have to do some consideration around that. Just off the top of my head, I see issues with, um, um, barbecues and, uh, what we call ceremonial fires, and potentially sanctioned fireworks.
Okay.
But I would be happy to consider and bring something back, if you would like.
Also, I'd question whether, under the prohibiting camp, camping ordinance, is where you'd wanna add that language?
Okay.
Forgive my ignorance, but is it relevant to add "established campsite"?
Yeah, my, my question was, does this, is this in conflict with our inability to establish a campsite?
No, the way that our code works, a campsite is either temporary or established, especially now that we changed this definition. Campsite is a campsite.
Regardless of its establishment.
Right, it's what we previously would've considered established immediately upon placing things down, we've just changed the definition of established, not of a campsite.
Okay. Any other questions around the open flame?
Yes, sir.
Council Chenoweth?
Thank you, uh, Council, um, or Council President. Um, I, I do foresee this one being the one that is most likely to cause us some legal problems going forward. Um, and, so I guess my question to you would be, um, should the Supreme Court come back with some verbiage that puts us in a position where this is now, uh, putting us in a potential for a lawsuit? How quick of a turnaround does this take to fix this, should that happen?
It shouldn't take us long to fix something if the Supreme Court came down and we saw we were obviously in conflict with something. However, I should also point out, I listened to the oral arguments, and generally, I would say that the tone was in favor of the ORS here. It felt as though Oregon stepped into the space with its requirement for time, place, and manner rules, and has done something very reasonable. Um, I don't know where that's gonna go, but yes, I believe we could fix something quickly if the need arose.
Any other questions around the open flame? All right, good, move on?
Like I said, there are also three small cleanups, I'll just address them with you quickly, I don't think they make a big change. First, our definition of campsite included the word "established," just because that wasn't more meaningful at the time when we made it. Uh, we have removed that word, it is still roughly the same definition. This one sounds more complicated than it is, the idea being that where a residential zone abuts a different zone at a road, according to the zoning code, the center of that road is where the residential zone ends. However, my understanding of both good enforcement and the efforts being made in the camping code is that we would prefer both sides of the street at the edge of a residential zone to be enforceable. This just clarifies that. If a residential zone ends at a road, both sides of that street are no camping for purposes of this. Yes?
Does the, um, the parks ordinance have a similar, um, provision, it, or is camping prohibited within a certain amount of feet of a park, or is it just within the park?
Just within parks.
Okay, so that, that provision doesn't exist then for that?
Yes, except that many parks are in residential zones. Maybe all, I couldn't say for sure. Finally, there is an obsolete reference to state code. As you've heard, it mentioned a number of times, the relevant code for the seventy-two-hour rule is ORS one-nine-five-point-five-oh-five, and we had a citation to an older-numbered statute, that is updating that. Are there any further questions?
Any further questions for City Attorney before we move on to discussion? All right, with that, I'll open it up for discussions and thoughts before we move on to a vote.
I think we oughta pass this. Um, you know, it's hard whenever you're making, uh, changes to city laws that affect the poorest folks among, among us, but also, we've had a significant problem with community harm, uh, caused by camping, and I think this moves us, uh, kind of towards an important update of our time, place, and manner restrictions, so I'll be a, a yes on this.
Okay.
I too will be a yes on this.
Same.
Just to clarify, David, uh, if this was to pass unanimously tonight, we could do a second reading tonight, and if it doesn't pass unanimously, it's a second reading either at next council meeting?
That's correct.
And then it's thirty days from then, when it's adopted?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on?
So, if, if we were to pass this tonight, then what would the, the enforcement timeline look like, Chief?
Uh, thirty days, there's a thirty-day window. Our staff will go out and educate, um, um, those that we come in contact with, with the, uh, impending changes to ordinance.
And, 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 sorry, can I follow up?
Yeah.
Okay, and if it doesn't pass on the first reading, our next meeting is?
Uh, May thirteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, that's close.
I, I understand that community outreach doesn't do, like, they're not enforcing camping, but I just wonder if they would be a partner in educating, for, during the thirty-day window. I wondered if community outreach...
Oh, yes.
Would be a partner in helping disseminate the information.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't be an issue, in fact, they, they're out there making contact, um, almost daily, so yes, we would ask that. In fact, I briefed Bethany Ball and Lindsay Manfrin yesterday, specifically about this, uh, this discussion tonight.
On the ordinance timing, we've used the state of emergency prior, is that something that uses to, to not have to wait the thirty days, it takes immediate effect, and are there qualifications for doing it? Not, that this is something we wanna rush through, but, I mean, I think it's taken the proper amount of time, as I was just notified by the school district, last day of school is June fourteenth, so I think, you know, it'll take effect before then, and so whether or not that there is a need to do that, I don't, I don't know, but I know we've used that tool prior. Does the chief find compelling evidence, or, or would it be something that's on or off the table to, to want to?
I would, I would lean to the city attorney, uh, for, to answer that question throughout, uh, I would just lean to him.
Okay.
I am only provisionally familiar with the fact that that's possible via an emergency ordinance. Um, I would need to do some research in order to be sure about an answer to it, um, I can't give you much more than that right here.
Okay, no problem, I don't, strong feelings, I was just curious when we started talking about timeline.
All right, any other questions or comments before I call for a motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion, accepting the first reading of ordinance number five-one-four-four, and possibly passing to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion by Council Geary, and a second by Council Minkie. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, I'll ask for City Attorney David Lightenberg to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number five-one-four-four. An ordinance amending McMinnville Municipal Code Section eight-point-three-six-point-oh-one-oh to adopt a local definition of the word "established" for purposes of camping, and Section eight-point-three-six-point-oh-three-oh, adopting additional time, place, or manner regulations for camping, and banning open flames.
I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number five-one-four-four.
So moved.
Second.
We again have a motion by Council Geary, and a second by Council Minkie, and I'll call on our city recorder Claudia to poll the council.
Uh, Council Geary?
Aye.
Council Minkie?
Aye.
Council Chenoweth?
Aye.
Council Payne?
Aye.
Council Peralta?
Aye.
And Council President Garvin.
Aye. After the roll call vote, ordinance number five-one-four-four is adopted by a vote of five to zero. I will now adjourn our council meeting at eight-twenty-one PM. Thank you.